Let me turn on the microphone. I'd like to call this town council meeting for Thursday, February 26th. To order please. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in accordance with our new placement of the agenda, the Kinder Morgan proposed not least Energy Direct Pipeline Project will be discussed first. And I hope everyone will bear with me because I have a feeling I'm going to be reading a bit. Everyone in the audience has a copy of all these forms, but the public does not. So I will be trying to highlight the most important pieces of the document, okay? The first thing I'm going to do is do a little bit of report. Because that's the first thing, informational reports and updates. I want to make a comment. The last New Hampshire Open House was held at Hampshire Hills in Milford on Tuesday. We learned that the FERC, which stands for the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, will be holding scoping meetings in those communities that express an intent. Now, this is what I want to be able to have everyone understand. There is a form. It is going to be on the website. It is here. And it is labeled Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And talks about the docket number. And it has to do with comments. We would like anyone present and anyone in the community to please fill one of these out. It will be on the website to be able to download and print out. And the address is right on the copy. We're asking as many as possible to write in, aside from any other comments you want to do. But we want to be able to ask that we would appreciate a scoping meeting being scheduled for Merrimack, New Hampshire. During the meeting, we were told, the more requests they receive, the higher the odds are that the meeting will be held here in Merrimack. So I'd highly recommend that as many as possible can write any comments you want, but particularly request a scoping meeting to be held here in Merrimack. So if we can all get together and get that done, that would be terrific. There are going to be regional meetings, but we don't want to have to travel to Litchfield or whatever. If we get a certain number in, we're going to be able to get it here. So I would highly... Yes, Eileen?
Could you just explain what a scoping meeting is?
Explain what's... Why don't you explain what a scoping meeting is? Thank you.
All right. Just very briefly, the open houses were hosted by Kinder Morgan with a FERC representative there. So they brought in all their experts from Kinder Morgan to explain things to people at different booths. And a scoping meeting is actually one that's held by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, where they'll come to the community and hear the comments from the public. They'll be taking information in written and verbal form. They'll be... It'll be a formal process whereby all of the information will be taken down by a stenographer. And it's really critical to make sure that there is a scoping meeting. If there isn't enough interest, they might... They're not required to have scoping meetings at all. But if enough people get together and ask for the scoping meetings, they will be held. And as Nancy said, the more people from Merrimack that ask for one, the more it will come here. And those are the most important meetings that you can attend, even more than the Kinder Morgan informational meeting. Because these are the regulatory guys.
Thank you very much. So obviously, it's very important, okay? Second thing is, we did get a date for the town meeting. Kinder Morgan will be attending a meeting here on March 26th from 8:00 to 10:00. Now, and that's going to be at the Master Cola Middle School, the all-purpose room. That is a regularly scheduled town council meeting. But what we're going to do is have whatever agenda we have from 7:00 to 8:00. Obviously, that'll be short. And then we are reserving 8:00 to 10:00 for Kinder Morgan alone, okay? Now, what I'm going to be requesting the council... I'm not sure I can do it now. Why don't we wait? We need to be able to find a way of notifying the community. I am going to propose that a postcard be sent out to all of the Merrimack mailboxes. And we've looked into that a little bit already. Basically, letting them know that there is this proposed high-pressure pipeline going through. That we encourage them to look at the website for information, to be able to have knowledgeable, and also to let them know that there's going to be a meeting on March 26th. So I'm not sure if we need a vote on that or a consensus?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Ah.
Second.
Could I also request that we allow the staff working with me for the verbiage?
No objection.
Okay. And, okay, so a motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Lon Woods. Is there any discussion about that? Yes, Finley?
Is it the intention to send a postcard? And I've heard that the cost is about $5,000. Is that accurate?
That would be the max. We talked about the town staff doing it versus sending out. And do you want to address that, Paul? I know you know the most.
We've discussed whether or not to take the town staff and do it with town staff. Or there are mailing companies here throughout town. There's two or three companies that we've used in the past that could do this postcard for us and mail it out for us and hit every post office box, PO boxes, residential homes and businesses to make everybody aware of it. And $5,000 would definitely be a max on a postcard. I could see it being a lot less than that, but $5,000 would be max.
We had originally talked about just using the taxpayer list. But that's just residences. It doesn't mean that everybody who has a mailbox would get it. And that's why we're talking about mailbox holders versus just...
It's about $11,000, give or take.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yes?
I'm a little surprised at myself, but I'm going to say, I'm not sure... I'm on the fence on spending five grand. Newspapers are printing stories about it every day. I'm sorry, you can't lead a horse to water kind of guy. The voters want to pay attention, then pay attention. You know, we get 3,000 people show up every April for our local elections through Facebook and just being on our agenda. It's a normal Thursday, like you already said, thinking it through. It's already a council Thursday night event. We're going to have a whole month to advertise it for free. If you can't get on board and don't know about the pipeline and coming into Merrimack, I just don't know if the postcard is a junk... piece of junk mail that gets in. How effective is it? And so I question it. I just don't know. Because for running for office, I've questioned mailers, and I haven't done mailers. I've been more of an electronic guy for running for stuff. I haven't spent that myself on an election or any thing. So I don't know.
My response to that, anyone...
I'd like to keep an open mind. If somebody in another council wants to convince me that it's worthwhile, I'm definitely willing to listen and may vote that way if I'm hearing something that can kind of convince me.
The reason I think it's a good idea, I think our role within this whole process is to do due process, to be able to notify the residents of the town. The reality is, there are quite a few people who don't even know about it. Now, you can say, well, they should. Well, a lot of people should know about a lot of things. But they get busy in their life, and unless it truly affects them directly, they may or may not pay attention. I guess I feel I have a responsibility, and we've had discussions before on this, that I want to be able to say that I did my job to be able to know, make sure people are aware of it. Now, what they do with it, if they throw it in the trash, then that's their responsibility. If they don't choose not to show up, that's their choice. But I guess I want to fulfill my responsibility in terms of what I think I'm responsible for as a town council. And that's why I'm looking at it. I'm not sure if anyone else has.
I think we would be hopeful that people would choose to recycle the card as opposed to throwing it in the trash.
So that's my view, but yes.
But I was just going to say, that being said, not many people are on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. I mean, I know you're not a big fan of email, counselor. So I think...
Oh, no, I've come around. I am... Back me up. I am so much better than I used to be. Oh, geez.
You don't read your email.
Absolutely. I used to be a caveman. No, I'm halfway there now.
Halfway is right. Because I don't read the email.
You're still Council Caveman.
Well, I mean, I'm better. I'm a lot better. But I know what's effective. And I just... The postcard, I'm not sure how effective it will be.
And Dan, I don't disagree with you, you know, having run political campaigns for and understanding whether or not it's effective to do a four-by-six, five-by-seven.
But when it's your own money, then it's cool.
It's your own money, correct.
But this is five grand. I'd rather give you five grand to go to Watson Park. Or, you know, five grand's a lot for postage. So again, what I could do at Wasserman Park with $5,000 is a lot. Can make that swimming area dredged out and loose sand, I mean, all kinds of stuff. But that's how I'm thinking.
Yeah, I understand.
Like I said, I might even just abstain if there's a vote to spend. I might, because I just...
Finley, and then Lon.
I have equally the heartburn. However, I am going to support the motion for the reasons pretty much stated by Nancy that, you know, we've obviously had a lot of outcry from individuals, and I think that it would be, you know, us doing that one last thing just to make sure. I do not necessarily believe that it is going to be money well-spent, but hopefully I'm wrong and, you know, people will hear it and act. But so I understand your concerns, but I would, you know, I am going to support it for those reasons.
Lon.
Couple of considered remarks. I agree. Sitting saying all at once, we're going to spend $5,000 initially, sounds like, ah, there may be reason to question that. But I don't think anybody at this table, I don't think anybody in the audience expects anything of this council except representation. This affects the community. I have reason to believe it affects the resources a little more strongly perhaps than people have realized, but that's okay. It does affect the community. And I think the effort to make people aware that they have an early opportunity to listen to what I will call, and I apologize to Kinder Morgan ahead of time, but I'll call it their commercial. Because make no mistake, that's what it will be. I've had the opportunity to attend two open houses, one in Lunanderry and one in Milford. And if the only people who had been there were the Tennessee Gas Line, Tennessee Gas Pipeline Construction, wherever they are, and Kinder Morgan, I would have been very disappointed. However, FERC was there with, I believe, outstanding representatives at both meetings. They're our advocate in the federal process at this point. And I don't know that they're planning on attending the Kinder Morgan meeting. I would probably be smart enough to know they're not. And we can't, we can't bring force and effect to get them there. But I am in favor of the motion. I am in favor of informing the people we're elected to represent about this meeting and let the chips fall where they may. We can be criticized for frivolous spending after the fact, but that would be after the fact. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you. And thank you, Lon. That was very well put. I just wanted to bring up a couple of questions. One, you're talking about a postcard. You haven't defined a size. Built throughout three or four different sizes. Has anybody discussed whether there's the cost difference and the effectiveness difference between sending a letter and sending a postcard?
We have not compared it, but I suspect a letter would be more expensive just because of the weight. I know postcards are cheaper.
Post...
You could bulk it.
Different.
You could bulk it. If you go through a mailhouse, you can bulk that.
Okay, but I guess my next question... Go ahead. Why don't you finish on the other question?
No, I just was wondering if it could be more effective to put it in a letter. You could get more information. You could, maybe because it's a letter, people might look at it more than they might a postcard, things of that nature. I'm just...
My initial thought was that it can be concise. People will tend to read something really quick versus opening a letter and going, oh, I'm not going to read all that. And then we'd have to come to the decision, what do we want to put in the letter? Because it is lengthy. My concept was, one, notifying them that it exists. Two, that the resource, informational resource is on the website, and we encourage you to do that. And we encourage, and to notify them and encourage them to attend the meeting. And that's simple.
What is the March 26th date?
Correct.
The importance of the...
Correct.
Well, that the pipeline is considered to be coming through.
Right. One, so let them know it exists.
Yeah.
Two, here's a resource you can look toward, and there is a meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Asking Eileen, when this was first brought up to me a week ago, I didn't take much... Because the price was $2,500. So tonight, I was taken a little bit back, and now it jumped to five grand. So maybe, that's part of my reason why I'm a little tepid on, because what, I asked her, well, I thought it was going to be only $2,500.
Because the $2,500 was only for those people with tax rolls, I mean, the property taxes.
Voter registration or property tax.
We're going to use a property tax. And then we found out that that was a limited... We're not getting to as many people as we should.
So the everybody list is five grand, approximately?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
That's the difference. Tom?
Well, I understood the price to be a not-to-exceed price.
Correct.
Because we were talking a range. When we talked about it this afternoon, we were talking a range.
We don't know details.
And the max was, the max would have been about five grand. So, and with that regard, I, you know, taking Lon's issue and what most people before me have said, you know, I, as an inf... As a notification of the project and that they have the opportunity to speak and the date of the meeting, you know, I don't say it's a problem.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, there is a motion. All those in favor, you say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Abstaining. Seven zero zero. Thank you. Okay. So the next thing, action items. This is where, I'm sorry, but I have to read some of this. Again, the audience has a copy of this, but the public does not. Depending upon what action is taken, will these things be put on the website after? Okay, so the first thing is this legal memo. Just to quickly introduce this, we had hired a environmental attorney to help guide us through the process. We had asked for guidance and recommendations. This legal memo is in response to that request. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I am going to try to highlight those things. Again, this is written by the JB... How do you pronounce it?
Terranga.
Terranga. It's not the way it's... The way it's spelled. Anyway, and this is to the town manager or town council. In brief, we recommend that the town actively participate in the pipeline proceedings before FERC and that the town respond in a limited fashion to the request that a town identify sensitive environmental areas and that the town allow, with conditions, the field surveys of the parcel it owns, which will be crossed by the current pipeline route. It goes on to a little bit background information, which I'm not going to read because I really want to focus on the three areas that we asked to be guided upon. First, should the town actively participate in the FERC proceedings regarding the project? Should the town prepare a response to the AECOM request for information regarding sensitive environmental areas in town which may be impacted by the project? Should the town allow access to town lands for first field surveys of those town-owned parcels impacted by the project? Under the discussion section, there are benefits and liabilities to all of these questions. And the information I'm going to be reading addresses those pros and cons, which again is what we acted, asked them to do. In short, from a legal perspective, the answer to each of these questions is relatively straightforward, yes. The most significant downside to participating is the cost and the perception that participation is somehow permitting or facilitating the pipeline. While the costs are likely to be significant in terms of both staff time and consultant costs, the town's participation in the process will result in an outcome that is more desirable than that to be obtained by sitting silent on the sidelines. At this point in time, the town can register a pre-filing docket in order to receive all docket filings. The town may also file with FERC a letter regarding its intent to participate in the FERC process as an interested stakeholder. As such, the town requests FERC consultation regarding the impacts of the project. And that really puts us in a good position when we want to request being an intervener. If we are an active participant from step one, when it comes time for that 30-day winter window to become an intervener, we've already established our interest. The field surveys and identification of environmentally sensitive areas are pieces of the FERC process, which illustrate how the town's participation is more effective than stonewalling. If the town allows the field surveys, it may propose specific terms, such as access to the information collected about the property and that the property be returned to the same condition as prior to the field survey. If the town disagrees with any information discovered, then it can address those disagreements before FERC. Should the town refuse access to the field study, then the property is not excluded from the pipeline route. It is simply included with less accurate information for FERC to consider in the assessment. This does not benefit the town. Likewise, identifying environmentally sensitive areas impacted by the project will allow FERC to consider and mitigate those impacts as part of the process. Refusing to provide such information will simply allow for decisions to be made regarding rooting the project without full information regarding sensitive environmental areas in the town. This is not in the town's best interest. Okay, I'm trying to think. And the very end, in short, the town has much to lose by not participating in the FERC process, first as an active stakeholder in the pre-filing process, and then again, as an intervener, what I just mentioned, in the application process. Failure to participate will mean that down the line, the town has no right to do so if the town fails to properly intervene. Once an entity has no right to be heard, it is entirely without leverage to effectuate any change in the proceedings. Okay. So I've read that. So what we have to do is consider that recommendation. What I'd like to do is have any discussion related to this memo from any of the council members. No comments? Go ahead, Lon.
Yes, I think it's, I think it's a very well-written memo. And I think the questions and then the attorney's response to perhaps her own or our questions is very succinct. And I'm totally in favor of her comments at the end. I expressed the other night at a meeting, or the other afternoon, that perhaps I'm becoming like Chicken Little, running around saying the sky is falling. I'm willing to, I'm willing to be thought of that way for the moment. Because I do believe that, yes, Kinder Morgan and the Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company have determined a route which impacts more than four miles of right-of-way in the town of Merrimack. Those facts are on the website. You can, you can scale the map. I have one here available tonight. And that's accurate. To do nothing in a, during a pre-filing process, and we've heard various dates, some have been characterized to me as inaccurate, some have been characterized to me as just pulled out of the air, that's fine. But we are a stakeholder. There's no question in this counselor's mind that the town of Merrimack is a stakeholder in this project. And whichever door we need to be at and through earliest and often is the door I suggest the council go to. And we've been pointed in a very good direction. So I encourage the council to take whatever action is necessary to get that accomplished soonest. Thank you.
I meant to mention, Paul, you were going to mention something at this point after that.
Yes. I attended the open house at Milford on Tuesday night along with several of the counselors. When I was sitting there waiting my turn to ask the gentleman from FERC questions, there were a couple of gentlemen in front of me asking him questions. And in about a 10-minute span, he must have said about 15 or 20 times, "We look at the environmental impacts of the pipeline on communities. We look at the environmental impacts on the pipeline on communities." And that's what he kept saying when they would ask a question. Then they would ask a question, "Well, what about noise? That's an environmental impact. What about wetlands? That's an environmental impact." So FERC really takes a hard look at the environmental, environmental impacts on the project. And when I got a chance to ask my question about it, I said, "Are you going to be sending out somebody different than AECOM or Kinder Morgan sending out for their environmental study?" They came back to me and said, "No, we take the information we get from Kinder Morgan, we review it, we send out our own field specialists to verify it." So if you don't participate with AECOM, they're going to gather the information, FERC's going to review it, they're only going to verify the information that they gathered, what they were told. And those were the two points that I really got taken away when I was dealing with the FERC, with the FERC gentleman.
It's important information. Yes, Dan?
So many things to say in a way, so I'm going to keep them a little short and concise. But I'm in favor of the proposal. I'm not surprised by the attorney's words because I kind of had a feeling from reading up on, on it of what the proper thing was. But I can't help but say this out loud. It really, I really feel bad for Milford when I learned that their Board of Selectmen took a vote of four to one against cooperating. Because they, it's their duty as being elected, you're supposed to look out for your town. And they let an emotional thing get to them by saying, "Well, we're not going to participate." And I, after reading this, you really can understand what, where you're left out in the cold if you don't. I mean, this, this process is not designed for legal bodies of local governments not to participate. The laws, unfortunately, have been made that we don't have a lot of power. That being said, it should be known to everybody out there that this is between the Department of Energy and Kinder Morgan. And many people at open houses have said, "Well, this pipeline, gas, isn't even for New Hampshire." And my answer sarcastically is, that doesn't matter. The Department of Energy doesn't care that it's not for New Hampshire. They're part of a greater network of regional power and national power, and they have things that you could take six hours a day and read for several weeks to bone up on where they're headed. You know what I mean? So that, they deliberately have made laws not to allow local politicians to stop it. So what can stop it? That's, so here's my next phase. This is why it's important to do the survey. Wells might stop it. 50 miles of ledge might stop it.
What a supply.
Right? Their construction cost. This is their Plan B. They thought by an aerial satellite photo, because it's common sense, that's Public Service of New Hampshire owns 80 miles. Well, they might discover that within that 80-mile corridor, that it's 50 miles of ledge. And, and they got well head here, well hair there. And their impacts may come back after two years of studying it at a million dollars, and they're going to say, "You know what? This doesn't work for us." And they throw it in the dumpster, and off they go to the next place. That is a reality. I can't give you the percentages of what might happen, but that is a reality of their business model. So this is not a foregone conclusion that the pipeline's coming through, coming through here. There's a lot of work ahead of them to make that determination. And so with their, their money, their profit for business through their, their company and FERC analyzing the data, there'll be an outcome. So in order for us to have any sway in that outcome, you have to be procedural and smart and legal and work within the system that's given us. But just by saying, "No, we won't participate," is meaningless as a legal body, as we are elected officials, whether we say we're for it or against it, holds no bearing on the process whatsoever. It's actually harmful, which I'll point out again, what I believe, the Milford case is harmful. I think they, they did not act...
Missing an opportunity.
Yeah. They did not act in the best interest of their town, in one man's opinion. So that's everything I want to say about it for tonight. Thank you for letting me be me. I will support the efforts of, of the attorney that we hired. You know, I think we, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just because I have to throw my two cents in. I certainly agree a lot of what you just said, Dan. I think it's important to realize that, and stress even more, that taking the I think it's important to realize that, and stress even more, that taking the negative position would be harmful to our position in the overall project. And, and the attorneys pointed that out. When you stop to think about it, when you look back at a situation, you come to the natural conclusion that to, to put your head in the sand, or to say, "I'm not interested, don't bother me," doesn't move your position forward at all. And, and while emotionally, you want to say that, you want to tell them to take their project and stuff it somewhere that doesn't shine, but that's not the way you're going to get any say in the matter, and you're not going to get any action on the matter. You're just going to get ignored if that's what happens. That's what our attorney's telling us, that's what we need to understand. And we need to sit back and take a less than emotional view of what's best for the community. And I think it's been said quite clearly here, so I'm not going to say it sixteen more times, but I would approve it as well.
Just to summarize a little bit, I think some of the arguments we're doing, they work for them. Nah, I guess that argument could be made, but their work won't be accurate. You know, it will be, we will be able to make sure that all of the resources and the important information from our perspective is on the record and is represented accurately. And that is the information FERC's going to get. If we don't, if we're not included in it somehow, then that information will not get to FERC and FERC can't take that into consideration. So that's my perspective. Tom?
And that's, that's correct. If you're not going to participate at this point, it weakens your position in terms of claiming to be a stakeholder. And it also may be fatal when you, if you try to apply for intervenor status, having not participated, having not participated in the early stages of this whole process. And, you know, as, as, has been said at this table more than once, you know, we have a higher level of responsibility. And at this point, and that is to take all these factors into consideration and based on our collective judgment, to take an action that we think is in the best interest of the town, and in this, in this circumstance, it is. And, you know, it doesn't mean we can't say in there that we, that we, you know, at this point, we don't agree with this, that we may, we have, we have objections to it, and those objections are based on.
That's right.
A, a list of things that we've already developed to put in the letter, but, and let them know that, you know, we've got considerable concerns with this whole, with these whole issues, and we're providing them with that information because in the end, it's in our best interest to do that. You know, I've always, I've, I've done administrative stuff before, as I've said before, done administrative hearings. I always wanted the other guys to work off of my data, to work off of my position, not for me to react to theirs. So I always tried to get my stuff in early and often, to make them react to what I was doing and how it worked. And, and that was always a, a, a very good strategy for me, that it, and, and I won't say it worked all the time, but in a lot of cases, it was very important for me to get the information in on behalf of my, of my member, municipal member, at a hearing, to get their position well-stated, and to let the, in the, the opposing party react to that. And so I think that in this, in this regard, that's exactly what we're doing here. Because they're going to have to, they're going to have to react to what we tell them in one way or another. And create that dialogue, if you will, or that argument. And then, you know, it's going to be up to the, up to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to decide which piece of that they're going to take.
And it's that kind of data that this council needs if it ever wants to make, take a position. If you ever have a position, you have to have evidence, and this is the evidence.
You keep saying the word data, and all I can keep thinking about is the wellheads. It's, it's, that's a real critical area right there, and they're going right through these two zones. Seems to me that that's one of the most important issues that you could have against their case for a relocation. That's a real stumbling block for them. They, they care about water. You know, there's sometimes, there's a certain water well that's okay for them, and then there's others that they, they don't, they don't want to go to it. So.
Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to accept recommendations provided by our, in the legal memo of February 12th, and also to have this, if approved, put on the town website.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Lon Woods. Any further discussion?
I concur with everything that's said, I just.
Don't need to repeat.
I don't need to repeat it, just, I agree with everything that's been said tonight.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Seven zero zero. Okay, because of that, we are now going to deal with the three letters. We were fortunate enough to be able, boy, this is moving fast, and she's good. And I want to take this opportunity to, to thank Eileen and Paul, because I know you've been working a lot with the attorney, trying to get this done in an efficient time span, and it certainly is happening. Okay, the first.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
To, to jump on your game a little bit here.
Go right ahead.
I would like to propose or to move that we, that this body formally request a scoping meeting from the federal, with the Federal Energy Regulatory.
Seconded. Perfect. To do an official letter from the town council?
Yes.
To FERC?
Right.
Perfect. I wholeheartedly agree. Any other comments related to that motion?
I would suggest that we all have our signature blocks on the bottom of it.
Okay, so the motion is made by Tom Mayhan to have an official FERC comment, or, or letter requesting the scoping meeting for here in Merrimack. Who was second? Bill Boyd? Any other discussion about that? No? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Tom. Okay. So now we can get on to the letters. Okay. The first letter is the letter to FERC, and again, I will read not word for word, but the, oh, quite a bit of it, actually. Okay. The town hereby, first of all, let me, I'm going to read it, and I already have some suggestions for revision, so I'm just going to read it as-is, and then we'll add the revisions as people bring it up. Okay. The town hereby notifies. What? Go ahead.
I was just going to ask which you were, which draft you were starting with.
I'm starting with the FERC.
You start from the beginning, that's good, yes.
Okay. The town hereby notifies both the commission and TGP, which is the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, of its intention to actively participate in docket number PF. I'm reading the FERC. Labeled Kimberly Bowes, Secretary.
She's sort of paraphrasing the first paragraph.
I'm not reading.
Paraphrasing, okay.
Well, I'm just.
Said you were going to read the whole thing in the, now you're not.
Well, it seems like I have a lot underlined, but it's not the whole thing. I'm trying to point out the, yeah. Okay, the docket number PF fourteen dash twenty-two, in order to preserve its rights as an interested stakeholder. Okay. We do have the miles that we can add in now, which is the first sentence of the next paragraph, which is four point four nine miles. And I'm going to move down to where it says, the, 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 really highlighting species and their habitats, permanent open space, recreational lands, residential properties, and may have impacts to the New Hampshire Plating Site, a federal superfund site. The town is in the process of working with TGP to identify sensitive environmental areas impacted by the proposed route and to complete surveys of town-owned lands. The town respectfully requests that the commission provide a fulsome public process, including comprehensive public outreach, public scoping meetings, and active engagement of stakeholders like the town in this pre-filing process, in order to ensure that such significant stakeholder concerns are fully addressed in any future certificate application to the commission for this project. The town will actively participate in this pre-filing process in order to achieve this end. Accordingly, the town anticipates submission to the commission of town, to the commission of town compiled sensitive area and field survey information in order to ensure full transparency in this process. What I'd like to request is you consider this change in the letter. Second paragraph, after it says, aquifer that supplies more than half of the town's water, does everyone know where I'm speaking of?
Third line.
Right? What I do is like to add, and crosses one of the town's major sewer interceptor lines as well, and then continue with the sentence. Because we found out today that it does cross one of the major interceptors, so that's a major environmental. Okay? So that's one of the changes I would like to put in.
I would.
Go ahead.
I do not like the word fulsome in paragraph three. I think we need to be clear, I think we need to communicate exactly to not just the community, but to FERC what our true intent is, so I would remove the word fulsome and add open and transparent. And have the appropriate preposition be changed from the letter A to N to reflect in, open, and transparent.
I would suggest we add full in the beginning of that?
Sure.
Full, open, and transparent public process.
So we could say a full.
A full, okay. That works. Well, I had a thorough, complete, and transparent public process, but whatever the game is. Okay.
Okay, so the sentence would read, if we start, "The town respectfully," oh, it's already, I still have two more things to read. "The town respectfully requests that the commission provide a full and open and transparent public process." Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And then it would continue as it is?
That's correct.
Okay.
And if I may suggest, after it says, "A public scoping meeting," I would add, "in Merrimack."
Perfect. So after outreach, public scoping meeting in Merrimack.
Yeah.
So that would be consistent with what we're.
That's, yeah.
To do. Wonderful.
Right.
I would like to propose that this be signed by all counselors.
And have the appropriate signature blocks on the, on the letter?
Yeah.
There's one other item I'd like to add in here, up in paragraph two. Were, were you put in and crosses one of the major sewer interceptors?
Town's major sewer interceptors, yeah.
Yeah. And add two major protected rivers. So he can, and?
Two major protected.
Rivers.
Rivers.
And then just continue on.
With municipally owned and privately protected.
Right.
Conservation areas. Should we list the rivers?
No.
Don't have to.
No.
Okay, any other suggestions for revision? Yes?
Actually, no revisions, it's just in defense of our attorney. I think her definition would have worked as well, but I'm good with Bill's recommendation.
Yeah.
Because I, the dialogue that was going back and forth in an email that I saw, I just got a kick out of it.
Okay. So what I'd like to do is receive a recommend, a motion.
Still moved as presented, Madam Chair.
Second.
With corrections.
With the, as presented with corrections.
And to be signed by all town counselors.
Correct.
Okay. Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by?
My second. I thought Tom had.
Tom did.
Okay, I'm sorry, Tom, that's why I didn't. Tom Mayhan? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Seven zero zero. Okay, the next letter is a draft from about, relate, yeah, for AECOM, and again, this has to do with highlighting highly sensitive environmental areas. And I will, I'm going to read the second paragraph since that seems to be the most germane. "Given that the project is currently proposed impacts multiple conservation areas, wellhead protection areas, including the aquifer that provides more than half of the town's water, scenic areas, habitat for identified endangered species, species, recreational areas, schools, hospitals, and the residents and water supplies of many of the town's citizens, it is vital to the town that all such areas be accurately assessed and identified so as to ensure that all impacts to such sensitive receptors are avoided and/or mitigated. To this end, the town is highly motored and willing to assist in accurate identification of these areas." So I do have one suggestion. After, in the second line, second paragraph, after town water, we add that same sentence and crosses one of the town's major sewer interceptor lines.
And two major rivers.
And two, thank you. And two major rivers.
Protected, protected. Protected rivers, thank you.
So we'll read, including the aquifer that provides more than half of the town's water, and crosses one of the town's major sewer interceptors. And two protected areas, ah, and add the superfund site language that is in the FERC.
Yep.
And have impacts to the New Hampshire Plating Site as federal funded. Perfect. Does everyone understand what he's talking about?
Absolutely.
So we're going to add the superfund site language from the FERC. The other thing is, Tom, you had mentioned, schools and hospitals.
Schools and hospitals, I think that was.
Schools and hospitals and that directly.
I was going to say, we shouldn't, we shouldn't overblow something if it isn't true, then you don't need to add on, and there's no hospital.
Don't weaken your case by including things that don't.
So we want to delete schools and hospitals from that paragraph. But we've added a couple of things as well.
Semantical question?
Yes.
We're carbon copying Eileen on this particular letter, don't you think in the interest of transparency, we should be carbon copying Kinder Morgan and FERC? So that, so that.
Well, I have down CC and FERC, do we need to do Kinder Morgan?
They are Kinder Morgan.
No, I'm saying FERC.
They're working for Kinder Morgan.
They are working for Kinder Morgan.
I understand that, but.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask you if you think that this part is redundant, when we talk about more than half of the town's, the, the aquifer that provides more than town, half of the town's water, and then it goes on to say, "And the residences and water supplies of many of the town's citizens." There's a little, you know, I, I know there's, there's a difference, but the most important thing is obviously to them will be the aquifer that supplies over fifty percent of our drinking water.
Maybe we can tweak it to say something like, "Provides more than half of the town's water."
Drinking water.
I see your point.
Is it speaking to the distribution lines to those homes as opposed to the wells? No, it was back to the wells, and it is redundant, in my opinion.
No, no, I, no, 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 I, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, Tom.
The, I think what she's trying to get at is that there are, there are other people in town who may not be located in those aquifer areas, who have their own water supplies, that might be more assessed as either, either residents as and wells of many town citizens, or private water supplies of many town citizens. Because Environmental Services makes a distinction between public and private water supplies. And so I think that's what, I think that's what Joanna was trying to get at, was the fact that there are other people further west of the aquifer area who, whose properties would be impacted. And we've heard people come in here.
That's correct, I was just going to say that.
And talk about those, and talk about those particular issues. So I think it's not a redundancy, I think it's an accurate, it's an accurate statement, it just needs to be clarified a little bit with a little change in language. Lon? I'm sorry.
Lon, yes.
Tom is correct. There are, there are private wells along the proposed line which are not affected by the MVD, nor in the actual aquifer. Keep in mind that they may be more highly impacted because they're closer to the surface than our deep water wells. Doesn't take any of my concern away for the aquifer and wellhead protection, nor should it. But they will be impacted, and their wells are much more shallow than the MVD wells. Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, might there be something said about having the Conservation Committee and the MVD as part of this, sort of a consolidated response? Certainly CCing, so that they know that we've, yes, Eileen?
Because we only received one letter, there wasn't one that was sent to the MVD and one that was sent to the Conservation Commission, there was one sent to the, to the Community Development Office. So that's why we brought the other bodies in, because many of the things that they were questioning related to MVD and to the Conservation Commission.
And that response will be a consolidated response?
If they wish.
If they wish. Well, we, we really, all we can do is invite them, right?
Yes.
If I can assuage your concern a bit, at the MVD meeting of February twenty-three, the commission and the staff formulated a letter to be sent to the same office at FERC that our first letter that we talked about is going. So I believe there is action in concert, if you wish, but coming from two different organizations. I don't know where ConCom is, whether or not they're going to respond. But we're with you all the way and working, working the problem in the, in the same fashion. Thank you.
Eileen, yes.
If we don't include responses back relative to this letter from ACOM with our responses, it will appear that, that this, this question, this, the questions on the, on the letter are not fully answered. So it would be, I think it would be okay to have three letters, one from explaining that there's a municipal water company that are, that is not affiliated specifically with the town, and the Conservation Commission has their own concerns. But as I said, the letter was directed to Community Development, and they asked a lot of water-related questions. And the, the answers should go back to this body, ACOM, together, I believe.
We, we will also be forwarding from the MVD to Community Development Director Tim Thompson, the MVD's response for the towns, or whatever the town requested of us to respond to, it was being, it was being tweaked for
There you go.
the kind of stuff we don't like to get into here in terms of this space, that, S, this parentheses. But it will be forthcoming very, very shortly.
And I know you've had a lot of conversations with Tim Tenhae from the Conservation Commission, so that would be, so it would be sent in in one package. What is the pleasure in terms of signature of this?
Well, it's, it's from Tim Thompson, so, because the letter was originally addressed to Community Development, I think it's appropriate that Tim.
Keep it as director as.
Tim is director, make the appropriate response.
Keep it, okay. Are there any other revisions? Yes, Tom?
Just for the public's comment or understanding, would you mind reading paragraph three?
Certainly.
Include that as is, just.
Unfortunately?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Unfortunately, the town's resources are limited, and the TGP request imposes a significant burden with regard to both staff and financial resources. The town must therefore request additional time and assistance from TGP to supplement these materials. We look forward to a public meeting with TGP to discuss how to best establish a process that will allow these areas to be fully identified and addressed. Any other comments?
And just, just to summarize the last paragraph, that the town is going to also request that we have the opportunity to review and comment on any materials prepared and submitted. So that we're officially asking them to share back with us any information that they collect, which as she, the attorney alluded to in her earlier memo.
Correct.
Allows us the chance to rebut anything that we don't agree with, or to make sure that the, the information is complete and accurate.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tom. Yes, Lon?
I would hope that the best established process allows the town to talk about perhaps tapping Kinder Morgan's.
Resources, money.
Money, period, to help us with the expenses, so noted.
Eileen?
In, in attending a couple of the meetings that some of the town managers have gotten together and started meeting, a very limited amount of town managers. At, at this particular meeting, there was a representative from National Regional Planning Corp. Who has, who indicated to us that in Massachusetts, many of the communities wrote back that we are, we would like to give you this information, but it's going to cost you this. And they never heard back from ACOM. So, you know, they, you know, they ended up being discounted because of that. So there's no harm asking for the money, but it shouldn't be the deciding factor, I don't think, for us to give, get the information out there. Because we have a lot, we, there's an awful lot on our plate in our community that, that would be affected by this pipeline.
My comment was simply to put a marker in place so that we have a chance to ask again and again.
Any other comments, any suggestions for revision? Okay, could I have a motion to prove this with?
I guess that would be my question, is a motion appropriate because Tim Thompson's the director and he reports directly to Eileen?
We're authorizing it, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay with me.
Okay. Madam Chair, then I would, I would move that the Town Council authorize our town manager to ask Tim Thompson to sign this letter to ACOM with the appropriate instructions that we've worked out tonight, as, as amended and as presented, to be sent to ACOM.
Second?
Second.
Tom Mayhem? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero zero. Okay, third is field survey access agreement. Just to let the public know, we had a very, what was sent to us was a win page, was it, Eileen? Sort of survey permission form, real basic.
Oh, right.
Right. Right, which we threw away. And we have received a draft access agreement regarding the field surveys. We need to, we can talk about the formatting and some suggestions and changes, but we can't insert the specific property information yet, because there's still some clarification that needs to be made related to specifics about the sites. So we can't put that in with this, but we can, the rest of the information we can look at and maybe make some suggestions in terms of verbiage. But, do I need to read this whole thing? Basically, it's to, it's to protect the town that you make sure that, if you're going, you have to make sure that everything's returned into its original state. That the town rep can be present during the survey.
They have to give proper notice of when they're going to be there, how many people can be there, motorized vehicles or not.
I mean, we're going to put this on, on the website, correct? So it's, the entire document, you know, once we've, once we've vetted the language, it's going to be available for the committee, community to peruse, so.
Correct. The only suggestion that I have is, in the last paragraph on the first page, it has been recommended that advanced notice, no less than twenty-four, should be forty-eight hours.
I was, I agree with that.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
A couple of questions, actually, but my first one, well, might have been my second, it was not my first, to just follow up on that. If you read that paragraph, I think I understand what they mean, but it speaks about now forty-eight hours, no less than forty-eight hours. But you continue down, it says, in spite of everything contained herein, to the contrary, seven days' advanced notice given by TGP to the town shall constitute reasonable advance notice. So I, I don't know exactly what they were trying to say, was it notifying us of the people that will be accessing the property, and their names and titles or whatever it said. The TGP cell shall provide the town with reasonable advance notice of the name and contact information of each and every individual exercising rights under this agreement, and then that sentence followed, but it, it still seems there's.
The way that I.
Eileen?
In speaking with Joanna about that, because it was kind of belabored or tortured language in there. And she indicated to me that what it means is that there's a minimum of forty-eight hours, but almost like in an emergency, but a reasonable period of time would actually be seven days in every circumstance.
That is still awkward, then, because it does speak to the first line of that paragraph. Before undertaking any activity on the property, Tennessee Gap Pipeline shall give the town reasonable advance notice, no less than forty-eight hours. So I don't know, it, I, I know what you want now, but I don't know if it might be made clear.
Can I just have her rework the language and send it along?
That works for me.
Okay.
To clarify the contradiction, it sounds like, really.
I don't, I don't think it's a contradiction, I think it's a legal, a legal process.
You might understand forty hours, but we want seven days.
Like an emergency or something.
Yeah, we'll just, I'll make sure that it's clear.
If, if I could go back up toward the top, it's, let me see, I guess, there's a paragraph and then a single line. And then it said, the town will permit at any given time, no more than four employees, it's that paragraph there. The town will, okay, I'm going to start from the side. The town will permit at any given time, no more than four employees and consultants of the TGP, the right, but not the obligation of ingress, egress from, access under, above, and through the property by foot and limited vehicle or access for the purpose of allowing TGP to conduct non-intrusive field surveys. So I was wondering if we're allowing them to go under, but it can't be intrusive, I don't know what that definition of intrusive is. And then also, I'd like somebody to tell me what limited vehicle access is, so we might have a, is it four-wheelers? Or are we allowing big equipment, I'm not.
Or driving into the paths?
Certain, certain of the parcels have access by gate and allow vehicular traffic. And when, when they request access and our employees go with them, they explain to them what they may use and what they may not use on each particular piece of property.
So approved, limited?
For instance, the Conservation Commission, Tim Tenhae would probably go with them, and they could, they would say, in this area, you can use a four-wheeler, in this area, you cannot, over, and that, that kind of thing. And that's the purpose of having the employees there, our employees there with them.
So we'll be determining what limited vehicular traffic is at any piece of location.
Because there's different sections that are, you know, are wetlands, and there are different areas that, where no vehicular traffic is allowed, because it's, it's a fragile area.
Okay.
Is that?
Yep, thank you, for now.
Anything else?
For now, no.
Okay, other comments? No other corrections?
Okay, well, then I guess I do have.
Go right ahead, you've got the floor.
On the second page, one, two, three, third paragraph says, shall restore any part of the property that is affected by its activities to a condition that is substantially similar. Is that inadequate? I mean, I just.
I just add.
Is adequate, okay. All right, if that's, that's good, thank you.
I would like to propose that after all the tweaking is done and the sites are included, that we allow Eileen to sign this?
Still moved?
Seconded.
So is that motion acceptance with, Eileen, go ahead.
Are we removing the word under from the egress? Because Finley just brought up the fact that he felt that under was intrusive.
Most importantly, what non-intrusive field surveys are, because if it does, if it's non-intrusive, digging a hole for a test pit or whatever, then, then they can go under, I suppose. But that's why I didn't know what you meant by intrusion, I guess.
But under could be a lot of things, it could be underneath the branches of the trees that they're walking along the ground, it could be underneath a bridge, it could be under a lot of stuff, they just, I think it's just trying to be as inclusive as possible and take into account all possible access methods.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
As long as everybody's got the trust going, I.
Lon?
It maybe will.
But verify.
To just keep, keep in mind that this is our language to them. They may have suggestions when they see it, but for now, I believe it's written in the fashion and in the spirit of providing the most protection for the town. And to tinker with it or redefine, I don't think is extremely productive. That comes from a little wee background in surveying, thank you.
Thank you, Lon. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to recommend, just to clarify.
There is a motion on the table.
Okay, now, who was that again, it was Tom, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so am I assuming that you're recommending with revisions that we're going to give the town manager to sign? And could I also request that it be, once finalized, put on the webpage?
Certainly.
Can that patty motion, and was there a second?
That was me.
Bill Boyd, okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against, any in abstention, okay, seven zero zero. Okay, and very soon I'm going to be able to stop talking.
Really?
How did I get this job, anyway? Okay, the only, the final thing, we are going to be having public comments, but I do want to be able to say, update. We do have action items, and is this on the website, Paul? As written?
I believe we're putting it up on the website.
Okay, because what we're trying to do is update and code it, what's completed, what's still pending, that kind of thing, so people can have an idea, it also helps us. So I'm going to quickly just update. It also has the date that we initiated these action items. On one twenty-nine, continue to press cam for a public meeting in Merrimack. That is done, so we can put that as complete, because that's scheduled for March twenty-sixth. Place an action item on February twelfth agenda, requesting the council take no action regarding request for the survey until Merrimack public meeting, that is also complete.
No, you are.
Survey.
You are allowing the survey, so.
Yeah, but they've already agreed to the meeting.
Okay.
Right, so it's basically complete. The next is already completed, which had to do with the, putting the topic on the agendas. Update list of properties that directly abut proposed pipeline with a list of properties that fall into pipeline hazard zone. We've not received that from Kinder Morgan so far, have we?
We have done our part, so the town has done our part, and I've also asked them to include all of the residences in the Whittier Place area, because they collectively own a piece of land, common land that abuts the property. So it would be a longer list than the one that we had before. I still have not heard from, back from Kinder Morgan as to who they, who they notified.
Can we facilitate that somehow? Be a pain in the neck?
I can be that.
Okay, well, go for it.
Well, I resurrected this draft environmental report that we were handed out, and in there, they say that they're going to do that. But they haven't done it yet. I think it's part of the application process, where they're going to include who they've notified and. and...
They've already started surveying, so they should have...
I'll call FERC.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, consider consultants. Research communities' property value effects of recent pipeline installations. We have engaged Avatar, which is going to be doing that assessment, and that's through community development. Evaluate impacts on the sewer line. We have engaged Wright Pierce, who's gonna be working with Public Works. Is that correct? Okay, support Conservation Commission, that is ongoing. Support the Merrimack Village District, ongoing. Request CAM list of abutters. We've already addressed that. Right now, there's no response, but we're gonna continue. Work with property owners to develop a list of who has been notified of the project and request for surveys.
What I was going to do is take my list, compare it to their list, and make sure that everyone has, had been notified, so I don't have their list yet.
Yeah, okay. Maintain contacts at FERC, that is ongoing. Consult with PSNH regarding where they are in the process, and we have not heard from them. Again, can we perhaps... Consultants share information with large companies. We had a meeting today, and again, it was more informational than anything else to make sure they understood the process, who the contact people were. Section one oh six of the National Historic, we're just waiting to see when that's going to be applied for, right?
It can only be submitted once the formal application is...
So, it's gonna be a while. I'm gonna put that, oh, pending formal application, there you go. So, yes, Lon?
Dangerous to ask a question when you don't really know the answer. I will make this comment before I ask the question. Request of Kinder Morgan, a list of abutters notified of projects, and requests for permission to survey. At the London Dairy Open House, and I don't have the person's name, I neglected to pick up the card, and I apologize, but I was shown a list of abutters that they have identified in Merrimack. Requested a list and was told, "No, this is just one we bring to the open house." All of which to say, I don't really understand, no response from Kinder Morgan. I mean, I'm not faulting anybody here.
Was that the woman?
Excuse me?
Was that the woman who was working?
No. It was a fellow I was talking to.
Okay, because I knew her name.
But I don't understand their reluctance. They have a finite list. I asked to see if indeed the MVD was on the list and was shown that on the list.
Okay. Did you speak to a person from FERC or from Kinder Morgan?
It was probably Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company. It was not FERC at that, no.
One of the biggest, sorry, but one of the biggest problems that we have had throughout this process, obviously, is getting, being able to get in touch with somebody who is not like the lowest of the low in Kinder Morgan. No offense, Matt and Lucas, but they really don't have any information or any pull. So, when I contact them and they don't respond, it's because they probably don't know. So, now that we have a better contact, certainly at FERC, we can get that list, because as Tom said, that they, they actually, as part of their application, they have to submit that. So, the best place to get it would be FERC, probably.
Yeah, and I found the reference to it here. It's, it's under landowner consultation, public participation, page one dash eighty-five. Go down, almost to the next to the last paragraph. An updated list of names and addresses of landowners whose property will be crossed by the project is provided in volume three, appendix A, capital A, capital A, which they list as privileged and confidential. Okay? So...
How is public record privileged and confidential?
Well...
Individual names and...
Individual names and properties. And, you know, it...
No, I'm just, I'm just...
I'm just telling you what's printed on the page.
And I'm asking the question, I'm just asking the question, Tom.
Okay. I'm just telling you what's printed on the page. And I'm not gonna sit here and try and speculate as to why they are doing that, although I can make an educated guess at that, in that, you know, it provides, you know, the reason we have the exemption under the right-to-know law for those kinds of things is because it so is not to provide an undue advantage to anyone. Okay? And perhaps, I don't know. Obviously, their attorneys have advised them to do it this way, or this is how they continually do it, but, you know, and...
Well, you've answered my question, anyway.
Yeah.
Eileen, maybe the person who we spoke with about the meeting? Matt?
Well...
He still hasn't gotten back?
Next paragraph. "After Tennessee submits the certificate application for the project in September 2015, in accordance with section one fifty-seven point six, open parent, small d, close parent of the commission's regulations, eighteen CFR..."
Oh, yeah.
"...section one fifty-seven six d, 2014, Tennessee will provide notification of the project to affected and abutting landowners, towns, communities, local, state, and federal government agencies within three business days following the date that the commission issues a notice of the certificate application for the project." And they go on and on and on about other notifications.
Now that I think about it, because it's still a pre-application process, and they're still figuring out the route, they could be talking to other landowners, trying to figure out how they're gonna jimmy-rig the thing.
Yeah.
After their surveys, they, you know, I mean, that's...
But they're starting the surveys.
And so, I kinda sorta, because they're trying to tip their hand until they actually have to submit the actual route for the application, whatever the final route is, is part of the application.
But it tells us we were on course by trying to put that list together and trying to...
Correct.
To match our list to their list.
Correct.
Dan?
There's a more common sense explanation, and Eileen just cleverly said it. The easy route was PSNH corridor. However, they have easement rights to land that doesn't belong to them. So, there's many different deeds. Just because they have eighty miles of the corridor, it comes to find out that they're not the majority landowner, and that's why it gets bogged down, and the deeds are taking more time, because they're trying to figure out who are the, all those deeded landowners. So, it's just taken, I would've assumed that the land agent would've had a list spit out by now, but I, it didn't come out as fast as that because of what I just explained.
Well, not only that, if those deeds haven't been acted on in the last twenty-five or thirty years, they're still using links and chains for their survey data.
But they do have some abutters that they've already surveyed.
Right.
So, they do have some list they could provide. Okay, Dan, anyone else?
I did have just a quick question. On these, there's a handful of businesses that were delineated here. Did they all show up, and were there others? Did, was it number that came?
Eileen, I'll let you address that.
I would prefer not to say who was there, but we did have a good representation.
Great. I guess that was more my wonder. Thank you.
Yes, Paul?
Just one final thing, Madam Chair. In talking with FERC, the biggest thing he said about the scoping meetings, and I just wanna tie it all together from what you said before, biggest thing about, if you want a scoping meeting in your town, you have to show interest from the people of your town. And that goes back to you with the letter that we're gonna put on the website. The more Merrimack residents that they get requesting the scoping meeting, the better chance you'll have it in your community. And that was his big point, the takeaway point, when I talked to him. He said, "I do a forty-minute drive. Forty-minute drive for us is almost a conquer." So, you know, draw a circle from Concord and go out for...
Have them come to us.
Yeah. If we get more people out there and more residents requesting it, it could be closer, very close to Merrimack, if not inside Merrimack or at Merrimack.
Is there any other comments or questions? Because I'm gonna open up the public comment.
Do you have announcements?
You have announcements. Well, no, I'm gonna open up to keep it with this.
Oh.
Okay. It's prerogative of the chair, and I'm using it. It's the first time I've pulled that, right? Please don't. We could wait, but it's just as...
The coaching is paying off.
Yeah, it's, I'm being educated. So, anybody who is, would like to make a comment, please come up. Please, you name an address, and...
Well, she's coming up, just wondering, is this now the comments from the press and public?
No, we'll do that separately.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Kim Dinsmore. I live at Four Whittier Road. And I appreciate the need for being conservative with our funds of this town. But I am very grateful that you're willing to reach out to every citizen of this town in regards to the upcoming meeting. I'm not a public speaker, so if I stutter, forgive me. I think that not only do many people not know about this pipeline, but there is a prevalent attitude that if it's not going through your backyard, then it really doesn't affect me. So, I'm wondering if it's possible on this postcard to bullet point some of the highlighted information that you've expressed as, you know, possibly affecting the entire town, just not to clutter it so that no one will take the time to look at it, but bullet point that it may affect the wellheads, that it is going through conservation area, so that it brings home the message to everyone that it does affect the entire town as a whole. And then maybe it won't end up in the recycling. Thank you. Hi there. I'm actually, Wendy Thomas from Merrimack, Ten Wildcat Falls. I'm actually going to be covering this for some articles, so I have some clarification questions. Earlier, Dan, you said that when I think of data, all I can think of are the wellheads, and you said, "They care about water." Can you clarify who they are?
Probably FERC.
Was it FERC? So, you weren't saying KM, Kinder Morgan?
No, no, KM.
FERC and KM, I would think, if you're asking me that, I would think Kinder Morgan, again, back to their cost, if they're having to move wells or create new wells, there's a cost point that they'll say, "This route isn't good enough, you know, isn't cheap enough for us."
Okay, but when, during that discussion, when you said they care about water, you were referring to FERC?
I think so.
I'm not sure. Sorry.
Okay.
No, we can't speak for them.
Okay. All right. In the letter, let me see, to Lori Ferry, Timothy Thompson, can you give me his full title, director of what?
Community Development. Community Development.
Okay. All right. Regarding the field surveys, I see all of these qualifiers, they can't have more than four employees, you know, the equipment and everything. I don't see any kind of consequences if they don't comply. So, what is the non-compliance for the field service?
Well, I would have, well, I can attempt an answer, but it...
No.
Okay, so it's...
They won't be allowed on the land unless they follow these regulations.
Okay. Who's going to enforce that? Are the police going to enforce that?
The people there, we're gonna require that town employees go with them, or Conservation Commission members, so they'll ensure that what they're doing is, is not going to do anything that is contrary to this document.
And I understand that, but if they do not comply, is that a police matter?
You mean, like, if they just show up?
Right, if they show up, yeah, if they have vehicles that are not suitable or something like that.
If they're on land that they're not approved to be on, yes, I would imagine. Would that, what's your opinion?
I don't have an opinion. I don't know. So, I'll find out, though.
It could constitute trespassing, because they were supposed to give us notice, and they didn't do that.
So, I guess my follow-up question is, are the police going to create a procedure for following up on this if there's non-compliance? Is that their responsibility for them?
Something we could look into. It's a good question.
All right. The other thing is for private citizens who refuse surveys, where, I've read some reports, and I think it was Brookline, and I'm not a hundred percent it was Brookline, some of the surveys have gone on private property where they've specifically said they do not want a survey done. And that town police department has said, "That's it. You cannot do any more surveys until you meet with us, and we are one hundred percent sure that you understand the procedures in our town." Do we have anything like that in our town? I contacted the police department, and I never got a reply.
Well, go right ahead, Eileen.
We had an incident this week, I believe it was Wednesday, that there was a survey and crew in town. Resident called us. We called the police, the police department, sent a patrol, patrol unit over there to talk to the people at the residency, and at the surveyor saying, "You're supposed to give us notice." They're supposed to give the police department notice when they're in town.
Okay. All right, so there is a policy.
Well, it's procedure.
A procedure, there's a procedure. Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Donald Minor, eighty-two Peaslee Road, Merrimack, New Hampshire. I don't, I don't think Finley had his question quite answered correctly or fully. When you're permitting the survey, are you allowing them to dig? This, I guess I can't make it any simpler than that, because the survey in which they wanna do involves digging. So, where Horse Hill is a sensitive area, Gilmore Forest, sensitive, I know Horse Hill has three endangered species. Are we letting them dig? I guess would be my first question.
I have a suggestion, but Eileen, you might know.
I just, I'd like to just go make sure that you understand that concerned people, such as the Conservation Commission, or town employees, or the Water District, for instance, will be...
I'm talking about Horse Hill in specific right now.
The Conservation Commission has authority or jurisdiction over it. So, what they will do is they will go with them, and they won't let them dig in different areas.
I've heard that. I guess what I'm asking is, you guys have drafted this, or your attorney, the permission?
Yes.
And intrusive is on there, am I correct?
Non-intrusive.
Non-intrusive, so we're not digging. I'm asking for some clarification, because it doesn't really say that. But I know that on the simple paper that I had, being in a butter, and talking with, I can't remember her name right now, there's digging involved, okay? And they won't be digging on my property, but I'm asking about the town property, because you're saying you're gonna return it back to how it was. You can't, when you dig a hole. Okay, so once you dig a hole, you can't put it back exactly the way it was.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. It says substantially the same. So, substantially similar. So, I, my, my thought about that is, yes, there will be digging. There won't be any boring, or there won't be anything intrusive in that way.
I think boring would be less intrusive than a backhoe, okay?
Well, they're not gonna use a backhoe. They're not gonna be allowed to.
Well, I've dug, I've dug test pits before. I own an excavator, and that's what they're gonna be using.
Well, they won't be using it on our property.
They'll use a hand shovel, because she said shovel. Now, the end, the bucket on my excavator is called, it's considered a shovel. It's what it's called. I'm just asking for clarification.
Let's just say this, okay? The surveyor calls up the Conservation Commission, and they say, "We're going out on your property." One or two of the Conservation Commission members will go with them. If they have a backhoe, they'll tell them they can't bring the backhoe. If they have a shovel, they'll let them bring the shovel.
Okay.
So, they will be watching them the whole time and the whole area.
Well, I'm sure Tim will be on it. I'm not, I'm just saying that if they show up with a backhoe and...
They won't be allowed to bring it on.
That's, that's kinda what I'm asking. I know from living in the area of the Horse Hill, that you have to dig about three feet before you find the ledge and bedrock, and I don't think they're gonna invest the time with a hand shovel to dig that deep. It's kinda what I'm getting at. So, they're gonna wanna put a piece of equipment in there to get their test results that they're looking for.
We very may, very well may already have that information from the environmental studies that have been done on that property. Because extensive studies have been done several years ago, and the environmental specialist is just gonna come in to update them. So, but I'll make sure that, that the information that you just passed along is brought to the Conservation Commission.
Well, I'm just looking for some clarification. I don't think it really was answered correctly.
What's important, yeah.
MVD did have a meeting, this was the last week or this week?
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third, and they're gonna follow, and I wanna commend them for following their geologist's recommendations. I hope that you guys really back that up. I think they, I understand the cooperation part for the Horse Hill area and such with the survey, and you have the meeting, so I guess, you know, I guess you can't withhold that anymore, which is what I was asking for. My other question, the meeting with the businesses today, why is that so secretive? Because those are Merrimack businesses, and I actually called your office today and was told, I'm not telling you anything. So, I'm a little curious on why it's so secretive. I mean, was Budweiser there?
We can do it either, we can do it either way. Go ahead.
Go ahead, if you want to do it. Many of the businesses, we invited some of the larger businesses, mostly ones that bought the property because they have their own opinions and their own resources to bring to bear on anything that they might want to do. And there are companies there that are on the New York Stock Exchange, and they don't want their own opinions about various things to be told to the public or any of those kinds of things, so...
I'm not asking what they said, I'm just asking who was there, I guess.
My opinion is if we had asked them, do you mind if we make your presence public? I would do that, but we didn't ask that. So I feel like I'd be intruding into their own privacy.
Well, as taxpayer, I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we didn't.
I'm not asking for what they said, I'm just asking who was there. I mean...
But I feel we should have asked their, we should have asked their permission to make their presence public.
Because I know that I'm probably not the only taxpayer that's curious.
I don't mind. I don't, I think it would be okay. Just a name, who was there. Yeah, that's fine. Someone from Anheuser-Busch, a couple of people from the mall, somebody from Elbit, somebody from Fidelity. And who else did we have?
Two people from Fidelity, we had two people from the mall.
Nana Trump didn't come.
They didn't come. Then we had Anheuser-Busch, that was it.
That was it, yeah.
Okay. Another question here.
Did you want to say something?
Let's get it finished.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just kind of scrolling through. You guys answered a lot of the questions, which I had took my time working on the farm compiling. Has anybody from the town, from the council or your office been contacted by anybody from the clean energy area?
No.
Okay, I was just curious, there's a couple of questions with that. All right, thank you.
Tom, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just for clarification, for, I did contact Conservation Law Foundation because I have dealt with them on another project, the I-93 project. So I reached out to them to see what their, what they're, if they were, one, if they were interested in it, and what they might want to do. And that was a contact I made three weeks ago, okay? The best, as we've reported, nobody else has contacted us about these particular issues, okay? What I wanted to say was, in response to a couple of points that Mr. Minor made, I think maybe in that document, perhaps we should add something about notifying the PD. Either we do it when they call us, we call them and tell them we're going to be here, or they do it.
That's a good point.
And then the other thing is to, when they call us, have them, require them to provide a detailed scope of work that they're going to do on that visit.
Okay.
Okay? That way, if there's something going on with that, and if there's something that we don't want them particularly to do on that, we can say, whoa, wait a minute. Why don't you tell me what you're doing with that and how you're going to do it and why you want to do it, okay?
Okay.
And that way, that way it gets us ahead of the game in terms of letting them know what some of the, you know, gives us a little bit more control. Might give us more control.
Well, in my dealings with Kinder Morgan thus far, I've been on record already, the Friday, I don't know, it wasn't even a week removed from the meeting, or she dropped me a notice, I'm sorry. I was at this, one of these meetings to say that they were on my property after I told them no. I was pretty crystal clear with it the first time. They don't follow protocol, I guess is what I'm trying to caution you guys on. So I would probably get a detailed list of, like you were just saying, and that's kind of where I was kind of like asking a question to get you guys to...
That's a good point.
That, are they going to be bringing a backhoe? Because if they bring a backhoe, they show up four guys, a backhoe...
Tim would put his body in front of it.
No, I know.
But I, we understand your point.
But I would probably also...
If Jacoboff were still alive, he'd be packing.
But I would also probably say is have an officer on standby, I guess, to, hey, if there's a problem. Because you don't want, the other thing, the town employee, I mean, Tim's a little guy. You get outside, out in the woods there, he's not going to want to engage these guys too bad.
I don't think that that's something that we have to worry about.
Well, I'm just saying if they want to dig somewhere and he says no, I don't know, I'm just saying.
But I think...
I'm not saying they're going to have a fisticuffs out in the woods, that's all I'm saying.
And I think that if it becomes a trespass situation, I'm not even remotely concerned that that wouldn't be something to be dealt with. As a matter of fact, my question ultimately became answered for me, understanding the, that people from town will be there, whether it's somebody from the Conservation Commission. And that's why I was good with that, because you're right. I don't know what intrusive was, and so if somebody's going to be there to be sure it's not damaging of the town property, I'm good with that.
I'm sure Tim knows of the real sensitive areas.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And the other thing is, you know, in all probability, this ain't going to be the be-all, end-all because we're going to go back and forth a couple of times with this thing before we finally come up with some kind of an agreement. You know, it's like the Arabian bazaar, it's just the beginning of negotiations.
Hi, I'm Gina Rosati, 15 Dunbarton. First of all, thank you so much for sending out the postcards. I know $5,000, in my opinion, is not really a lot of money when you stop and think about so many people are going to be affected. And even the people that don't think that they're going to be affected once I think they see how much this will impact the water, and they decide to jigger-jog or whatever they're going to do, then the people that are saying, oh, I don't have to worry about it, it's not my backyard, it could be in their backyard. So I'm glad that they're going to get the information, and they're going to know that they should be at these meetings, and they should be paying attention because this could be in their backyard. The other thing that I wanted to let you know is we did put something on our Facebook, the Merrimack Pipeline Information Page, about the scoping meetings. And we asked everybody if they would send a letter, excuse me, to FERC. So hopefully, the letters are being churned out right now as we speak. The other thing I wanted to ask, and someone brought it up, and I've been thinking about it for a while, is, do we have somewhere written down where our Native American burial sites are? I mean, there has to be Native American burial sites. If you look at that little white book.
Probably Historical Society, right?
Councilman Mayhew may be able to speak anecdotally about it.
I've already, I've already said it's too bad we don't know of one on the route because it would stop it cold in its tracks, okay?
There has to be some, especially down by the river.
Well...
Really?
Well, the Historical Society should have some information, don't they?
We do have Anita Krieger here tonight.
Yeah, Anita, we might be getting you.
So you will know about that?
Yeah, the public's not hearing you, Anita. She knows where the battle is, but not where the burials are.
Just...
Don't know of any.
So just out of curiosity, if they start digging with their backhoes and they come across some bones, what happens?
They have to stop.
By law, yeah.
By law, that's correct. State and federal law, they have to stop.
Okay.
Do not transplant, okay?
So even if they're not sure if it's, you know, whose bones they are, if they come across bones, they stop?
Yes.
I would imagine that.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I'm going to task myself with is looking through that. I have, I bought the white book from the library, but I'm going to look through and see if I can find anything there because to me, that's important. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Watson, 21 Whittier Road. And I won't duplicate most of that stuff, but I do want to thank you all for all that you've done. It's really nice progress. One thing is, you said, Eileen, you were going to add Whittier Road to the list. I don't know if it's still true, but Scott Road was not notified. And I talked to the president of that association, and they weren't notified. And they do have an active association, so...
Do, are they butters as well?
Yes, really, if, well, for now, really teeny portion of the common land.
Okay, that's fine.
That goes through. Something that you might want to point out on the postcard, Kim's ideas were great. One other thing I didn't know, if we wanted to point out, though, is that this is a proposed route. This route could go anywhere and affect anybody. So that might kind of help, you know, I don't know, the not in my backyard kind of thing. And one other thing is about the town meeting. I'm assuming there will be other people from other towns that come. So I don't know what the rules are for that. I do know at Milford, they allowed non-residents to speak. So just something I wanted to throw out there to keep in mind. Because, you know, when we were at Hampshire Hills, we were all introducing ourselves, that we've all seen each other all through Facebook. So, you know, it will spread like wildfire, but it's a great thing.
So we should think about how we want to handle that.
Just think about it, yeah. But it's great, and it shouldn't, you know, minimize it, but just to be prepared. Okay, thank you.
Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I wanted to...
Go right ahead, Bill.
Being at the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, the chair exercised his prerogative to recognize Milford residents first, and then once the Milford residents are recognized, to recognize other people that were in the audience.
That sounds very reasonable.
Deborah Huffman, 60, Amherst Road. I'd also like to thank you for all the progress that's been made. It's really good, and in fact, as we're seeing now, it is a sprint. It really is a sprint. And that's great, I'm glad to see we're all sprinting so well. Lon, you mentioned the dates and how there was some confusion about the date that was announced, about pre-filing. You mentioned that earlier. And I feel very badly about that because I'm one of the ones who said that date. And believe me, I have tracked that down as hard as I can. And I think the problem with the date came from the fact that, believe it or not, it's actually the applicant, Kinder Morgan Tennessee Gas Pipeline, that decides when pre-filing ends. And yes, we have that in writing from FERC because I found that so odd. So it's actually them who floats dates or doesn't float dates or changes dates, or now they're kind of saying, well, maybe September. It's actually them themselves that decides when pre-filing ends, not FERC. Isn't that kind of amazing that we have it in writing? And last thing, Eileen, I respect the fact that some companies don't want their opinions kind of, you know, out there floating in public, I respect that. If we could get some kind of just an overview of what was presented, like was FERC there? Did these people actually, was Kinder Morgan or Tennessee Gas or any other utilities?
No, it was basically a meeting to update them on what we all know. In case they haven't been watching, in case they are busy doing other things. We wanted to make sure, we gave them the schedule of the flow chart of what happens and where we are in the process and about the environmental things that we're doing and when the various meetings were, are, and that kind of thing. So it was mostly from us, from an informative perspective. We weren't asking them what their opinions were. It was really, you know, they need to go back and develop their own opinions. But what we were doing was just educating them with the information that we have.
Right, good. And I'm glad you did that, thank you. Okay, that's it, thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Yes. We have to be able to hear you. Don Minor again.
Don Minor. In regards to the meeting from eight to 10, is that a hard 10 o'clock, or is that going to be if there's a lot of people there?
That's a hard 10 o'clock.
Hard 10 o'clock. So if you've got 50 more people that want to ask questions, I mean...
Nancy? Yes. They are having these meetings in almost every town. So it's not only going to be in Merrimack. So the Kinder Morgan meeting, it might be confusing because we've been talking about two meetings, but the Kinder Morgan meeting is just a public meeting where they'll make a short presentation, and then the rest of it will all be up for questions from the public.
I'm just asking, if, let's hypothetical, how many residents we have in town? I don't know.
I don't know, but they said that they shut it down at 10, period. They'll leave at 10.
Hmm, interesting, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not our prisoners yet.
Okay, no other. Okay, thank you very much, let's move on. Announcements. Okay. Wednesday, March 11th at 7:00 PM, in the James Master Cola Upper Elementary School All-Purpose Room will be the deliberative session, the first session of the annual meeting. Thursday, March 12th at 7:00 PM, here in the Matthew Thornton Room, is a regular council meeting. And Thursday, March 26th at 7:00 PM, as we've already mentioned, the town council meeting is going to occur at the James Master Cola Upper Elementary School All-Purpose Room. And that is the evening that we will have Kinder Morgan from eight to 10. Eileen? You have nothing. Any comments for the, oh, thank you. Any comments from the press or public? Saying none. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements, none. Okay, appointments. Annual review with the Heritage Commission, Anita? I'm sorry.
May I suggest that the Girl Scout...
Ooh, I wouldn't mind that.
Do her first.
Anita, would you mind? Would the council be willing to move the...
No objection.
Without objection.
Without objection.
Very good. That under new business, Girl Scout cookie sales at Watson Park. Thank you very much, Anita.
Oh, I don't care, I'm fine. Thank you. I'm Beth Selby, I'm with Merrimack Girl Scouts, I'm the town cookie manager. We've talked to Matt, we're interested in having Girl Scout cookie sales at Watson Park. We're looking for some other new location that gets some high traffic. We've had it at the outlet malls before, they're going to charge us this year. We don't want to pay. So we're trying to find other locations to go. So we're hopeful that maybe we could have a cookie booth or two or three. We're looking for Saturdays through April 11th.
Go right ahead, Finley.
I just really want to understand, the premium outlets said they wanted to charge the Girl Scouts to sell cookies on their property.
Yes. They had said last year, the rules in the past have been you're allowed to go one weekend a year, provided you do nothing else. Like the Girl Scouts cannot go there any other time during the year, like to wrap. Christmas packages, one time a year. This year, when I called, she's like, oh, you can come anytime you want to, but you have to pay. And you can pay a discounted rate. I'm like, and what would that be? Because we get 50 cents a box of cookies, so if you're going to charge me 50 bucks, it means the girls are going to be out in the cold selling cookies. Hundred boxes breaks them even, and then it's above and beyond to make any kind of money for the girls. So we said, no thanks. Thanks, but no thanks.
Thanks, but no thanks. So you're going to have it on sleds?
Pretty much. Pretty much.
Yes, Dan.
I'd like to make a motion that we let the Girl Scouts sell Girl Scout cookies at Watson Park on weekends starting March 1st through April 12th.
Seconded.
Motion by Dan Dwyer, seconded by Bill Boyd. Okay, let's discuss.
I think it would be a great spot, wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Tom Keeney?
Well, you seconded it, you had just handed up.
I'm sorry, Tom.
I was going to suggest, instead of using a booth, maybe an igloo might be appropriate.
I think we're going to need it.
It's the right kind of snow.
All right, it is. Anyway, wish you the best of success. I support it.
Thank you.
Tom Keeney?
I hate to be a wet noodle here, but you said Saturdays and yet listed here Saturdays and Sundays throughout the entire time.
I'll take Saturdays and Sundays. I was trying not to be greedy.
Well, and I'd like to know where you're planning to be. I think if you're right up on the street, that would be a hazard and we don't want that to happen.
No, we have to have adults there with the children. I mean, that's part of our rules is you have to have two adults for every cookie booth that's there. So my assumption is we'll stick some stuff in the snow and pull them back off this, so that people have to drive into the park to pick up their cookies and then back out. So it's not a hazard to the road and it's not a hazard to the girls.
So you'll be down in the parking lot or off the edge of the parking lot? So that people can come in and use the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so are you doing Saturdays or are you doing Saturdays and Sundays?
We'll do Saturdays and Sundays if that works for everybody here.
As by the dates that are listed.
Yeah. Mother Nature cooperates.
Okay, all set. Tom, man?
Yeah, has someone reserved the transfer station?
I have.
So you're going to be in both places?
We are going to be all over Merrimack. There's about twenty-eight Girl Scout troops in the town of Merrimack. So I actually schedule all of the cookie booths for the entire town of Merrimack. So not only do we have places in town like the transfer station and Shaw's gives us two days at each Shaw's. We're also at Sam's in Hudson. We're in the Walmart over in Amherst. We're in Lowe's in Amherst. So we try to go to, you know, we have the rights first to the town of Merrimack and then the other towns have to give us permission to go.
Right. Okay, what, you want to make comments? Go ahead. Nope, sure, not. Now that you get picked on, you're quiet. Yes, Finley?
These will be Merrimack Girl Scout troops?
These are Merrimack Girl Scouts.
Any other comments, questions? No, okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
That's from ten to two.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any against? Any upstanding? Seven zero zero.
Thank you.
All set.
Thank you.
Now you got to go home and do your homework. R is too late for homework. Oh, that's right. That's right. Though, go to bed. Okay, Anita, thank you very much for allowing us to move that ahead. For a town of Merrimack, charter, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Heritage Commission. This agenda item is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know or could act upon. Welcome.
Thank you. Hey, I'm pretty much going to read this.
Go right ahead.
I may put my two cents worth in occasionally because I'm known for doing that.
Okay.
For those of you that know me. Two thousand fourteen, found the Heritage Commission with four full members and a liaison. The liaison and three of us out of the four are here tonight. We are actively seeking another member and three alternates. Don't know if anything happened in the last year that has encouraged us to find them, but we want it. We have met ten times during two thousand fourteen. We did not meet in July. We did not meet in December. The town brochures have been completed by a youth, Justin Clute, and they will be printed in the spring and they will be available on the town's website. These were called walking tour brochures in the past. There were two, now there are three. And because it's not always practical to walk in these places, we're just calling them tours. They will be on the website. I will be putting them up before spring on the website, but we're not going to print them until spring because it's a lot of effort on our part to get them printed because we will be printing them ourselves. And it's not a good time. And who's going to go out and do those tours right now anyway?
Anyway.
You can't get past the snowdrifts to do it if you want to. The display case out here at the top of the stairway at the Old Town Hall currently has a display by the Merrimack Historical Society. And the one currently features the New Hampshire liquor bottles that Bob LaRue has loaned us. And I'm sure you've seen them. The lights are on out there. If you haven't seen them, please do. They're pretty darn special. One of them was the subject of a newspaper article recently about some firsts in New Hampshire's history. We were going to come in here and take the pictures, but I couldn't get kids that were available at the time that the town hall was open. So had to borrow one of the bottles to get the pictures taken elsewhere. We hope to change this display every three or four months. It's not going to happen at least until probably May because until the end of the tax season, I am occupied. Don't know if I'm allowed to say that, but I did. Anyway, the plaque has arrived from Penacheek Water Works about the history of the village dam. It was removed in two thousand eight under a lot of duress. We finally got the plaque. It is very heavy. It is brass. It is relatively large. It is very well done. And it is at the town manager's office, waiting to be put somewhere. The plan is that when the canal pass through goes under Route Three, the canal portion that passes through is going to be the location of this plaque. It will be mounted on a wall there when the time comes. How long you'll be babysitting for it remains to be seen. I was wondering what that huge box was. That's what it is. Don't try picking it up. It is heavy. It is very well done, though. The signage for the Chamberlain Dam is also going, or the Chamberlain Bridge is also going to be done. And that's all on hold. The design for it is done. It will say Chamberlain Bridge because it does have a name despite the fact that a lot of people don't realize that. On one side, it says Town of Merrimack. This will be on the opposite side across from it in the granite on the side, by the sidewalk. And when they redo the sidewalk, some of that wall is going to have to come down temporarily. It will be engraved and put back at that time, whenever the sidewalk gets done. And again, it'll get done. But we sit here and wait. It seems like many of our projects get put on hold indefinitely. It's hard to put a date on anything. We are currently evaluating the repair and replacement of a plaque honoring John Cromwell that's located on the Anheuser-Busch property. It took us a while to find it. Turns it out it's in one of the flower gardens. And it's flush to the ground so that when the flowers are growing, you can't see it. But because it was put in flush to the ground, the water, ice, snow, everything else has deteriorated the plaque considerably. It is our plan to either replace or refurbish. We have talked to them about refurbishing. Before we can come up with that, it has to be removed from where it is, which is about as far under right now, under snow. But come spring, we're going to work with Anheuser-Busch to get this thing out before we are disturbing their flowers, before they start growing. And then we can evaluate whether it can be fixed or whether it's going to have to be replaced because there should be something and it should be mounted on a rock that is at an angle, not flush to the ground where it has deteriorated the way it has. It is obviously not at the location of John Cromwell's trading post, which was on the river, wherever the bank of the river was in sixteen fifty-five. Believe it or not, we do have a map showing John Cromwell's trading post from sixteen This showed up in a rolled format that was stored away at the Historical Society. And I said, where did this come from? And I checked and the original is in the Massachusetts State Archives. It shows seven thousand acres that was given to the town of Billrica in Massachusetts in order to settle up here. And it shows the location of Cromwell's trading post, which absolutely amazed me. And Lynn back there has had a copy of that right now in a frame. And we're going to use it for some ammunition with Anheuser-Busch to try to get some cooperation. And she is going to give them a copy of that. But it's a cool picture. I'd love to see the original and someday we will get down there because it's in the Massachusetts State Archives right near the JFK Library. Not somewhere I'm going to get to this winter. We have others that want to go with us. So that kind of extended my report on the John Cromwell monument that apparently was put there during the bicentennial year. That's our belief that that's when it was placed there. The portraits to be framed and mounted on the walls in this room are done. They are framed. We are working on getting the plates on them. The next question is, how do we get them put up in here? I know Nicholas has made it clear that he won't. So I'm going to need some help figuring out how they're going to get up. I brought one of them with me to show you.
Nice.
Now that is, this is Nathan Parker. Born in eighteen oh one, died in eighteen seventy-six. He owned a great deal of land up in the Reed's Ferry section, most of Depot Street. He owned, most of the houses on Depot Street were originally on his land, including the McGonmore Institute. That was on his land. This was in the home. Let me turn around. Sorry, anybody?
No, I'm going to grab the picture so you can talk into the mic because.
Go for it.
This is interesting for people.
It is. This picture was in somebody's private home who was a descendant of.
Have a seat so they can, so people can hear you. There you go.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, it was in a private home of one of his descendants who was going into a nursing home and wanted a home for this. This is not a canvas. This is painted on pine board. It is an original. It is actually on pine board. This one is actually two inches taller than the other five that are going to be mounted because we weren't going to cut this to a standard size. We did not want. So this is an original. It's all cracked. The glass on it is museum glass, which is non-reflective and protective from light and damage and stuff like that. They did a very good job of mounting this and we are very proud of it. The other five portraits are all on canvas. They are not original canvas. They are from Fork Pictures. And they will be going up in here. There will be two, two, and two. There will be six of them in this room. They all have the same frame, except that this one is two inches taller than the others, but you'll never notice that when they're hanging on the wall. But I wanted to bring that one. They're all being stored out here in the media services. They will have names and dates on them. Yes. Pardon?
Any idea who painted that?
No, we do not.
Yeah.
Anita, thank you so much. That's going to look wonderful in here. That's really something.
We thought so, too.
That's a big deal.
Wait till you see the other pictures.
I can't wait.
Because there are some pretty cool ones.
I bet.
One of them that just amazed us because it came from a snapshot that was this big, that was cracked down through the middle and cracked across and had Scotch tape that had yellowed on it. I took it down to CVS and they made this so that we actually have a beautiful, big portrait without any of that on it. And that's James Master Cola standing in front of his farm.
Oh.
Yep. You will like it.
So Eileen, you're going to work with Anita to arrange?
Yes, Anita, just give me a call and we will, I'll meet, we can meet with Nicholas in terms of what the best place, placement with the cameras.
He just says they absolutely will not go on that wall.
Okay, and then we'll have somebody from Public Works put them up.
Yep, good. That's who does it. I didn't know who would actually put them up. I know it won't be me. So, yeah. Okay. The Matthew Thornton and the Gage portraits that are out there in the hall will stay right where they are. They're not moving. And one of the others is a member of the Thornton family, James Shepherd Thornton. So he's one of the pictures that will be going up, too. Okay, historical signs will be made to present to the owners of the businesses and homes in the roads in alphabetical order between E and M this time. Letters have gone out to the owners of the places that we're considering eligible for this, and we're waiting to get answers back. The same people will be making them. R and L Graphics will be making them again. We have already had replacements for three that were put up many years ago, well, were made many years ago that were never put up because the owners didn't want them on their homes. Those owners are no longer around. They don't know where the, the present owners don't know where the old signs are, so we had new ones made. And they will be going up as soon as the weather conditions are suitable for that.
In July.
So. A project, the Matthew Thornton Historical Scavenger Hunt, was completed previous to the Fourth of July this year. This was Adam Jacobs' idea, by the way. He came up with the idea because he thought it would be cool to do something in conjunction with Matthew Thornton's anniversary type of thing. We had fourteen different stations and we made fifty passports. There were little pamphlets available in the town manager's office. We should have made probably a hundred because people, they ran out when people were looking for them.
Wow.
But we live and learn. Twenty-nine of them were returned completed. So that was a pretty good turnout, especially considering that the Fourth of July date got changed because of the weather conditions. And so a lot of people didn't go to the Fourth of July celebration to turn in their completed ones. I know more people completed the passports that never turned them in. There were prizes. The first two were gift certificates from a couple of our local historical restaurants. There were also several other prizes that were given out. There would have been more, as I said, if more people had been there. And we had gift certificates to several of the vendors for the Fourth of July celebration. But the vendors weren't there on Sunday. So people couldn't cash in their money. They had five to ten dollar gift certificates for food at the vendors, but the vendors weren't there on the second day. So unfortunately, that didn't all work out the way we had hoped. We do expect to do a project for this Fourth of July. We have not determined what it's going to be yet. The commission manned booths on the Fourth of July and at the Knights of Columbus Craft Fair, and they were sponsored by the Historical Society along with the Heritage Commission. We made a set of sixteen greeting cards. They were not all Christmas cards this time. They are smaller than the old Christmas cards were. And we had a lot of them to sell. We didn't sell as many as we anticipated. Seems like a lot of people don't send cards anymore. They're all electronic for everything. So if anybody wants cards, there are still some of them available at the town manager's office. There is a poster up at the town clerk in the corner there telling you what they are and showing samples of all of them. And some of them are pretty cool cards. We had some good photographers in town that did some of the work on them. And we got them to some of the churches because some of them are church ones and some of them sold them there. Kristin Newhall back here made all the arrangements for the cards. She did them all online and saved us a lot of money because she just picked all the days when they had specials at Vista Print.
There you go.
She did a great job. The commission has supported the framing of several portraits to be mounted in the memorial room. This was Jackie Flood's project. She came to the Historical Society to get pictures to copy, to have made, and to the Heritage Commission to support funding of framing them. They are not up yet and I have no idea when they're going to get up. That's between Jackie and whoever's doing it. But they are made and they're sitting on a table back in the memorial room if anybody wants to look at them. As you can see, the commission and the Historical Society have worked jointly on a number of projects. All members of the Heritage Commission are also members of the Historical Society. So we work well together and we don't fight. We have fun. Right, Lon? Right, Finley? You've been to those meetings. You know we have fun at them. So the cooperation for the two organizations has been a benefit to the town of Merrimack all the way along. We had a lot of assistance from Dave Yakubov before his passing. We miss him and we appreciate the interest and help that Paul McCauley gave in the in-between stages because we were lost. So Paul was great. And now our new liaison, Lon Woods, has appointed and he has been very active, except recently when our meetings always conflict with other meetings that he has to be at. So, yes. So we just had one Monday which he could not be at. We have been able to get into our meeting room. Somebody has opened the door for us for the last four months consecutively. So we have been able to get in and that's a big help, especially when it's five below zero when you're sitting in the parking lot. So do you have any questions for us?
Anybody? Tom?
Yeah, you heard some discussion here this evening about the Indian burial grounds. The reason I said I wish we could find one is because if you disturb it, it will curse the project.
It would. I wish I could prove something. I can't.
Because when we found, when I worked in Palom, we found one, the Squibb-Nocket Indians, whoever they were, and they found an Indian burial ground there, okay? And after that, we had more blasted trouble putting those incinerators in and getting And after that, we had more blasted trouble putting those incinerators in and getting them running and, you know, having the thing run. And I... And the selectmen would just sit there going crazy about what's going on. It's cursed the Indians. You know, you disturb the burial ground, you guys got what you deserved. Okay? And, uh... And, you know, so half tongue-in-cheek and half seriously, um, you know, that's part of it.
It would solve a problem if we could answer you, and I'm afraid I can't.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know. But there's other... There's other things, because the Abbey Griffin House...
Yep.
Okay, is within the range of the pipeline, a half-mile distance. Okay, we've been told, uh, Bob LaRue, uh, gave us some information about the canal lock that's also on the AB property. Uh, he says it's now covered by trees, but there's... I don't know if it's the last remaining lock or in Merrimack, or it's one of...
That's a terrible...
One or two that are there, and it... But we need to know where it is, so we can tell.
The lock on Anheuser-Busch is there. I've gone through it in a canoe several times. You can't get access to it through Anheuser-Busch, because the dangers and everything else, but you can get to it by boat.
All we need is location. That's all we need.
Tell Chuck Moore to bring you there.
That's what I figured. I figured that was my go-to.
He's the one that took me there.
That was my go-to.
And it is the screensaver at the Historical Society computer.
Yeah, okay.
The picture of it.
Um, and then I guess up on Horse Hill, there's the Spalding House or Foundation?
There is a foundation for an old Spalding House. We cannot guarantee that the trail going in front of it was the actual King's Highway, because there have been so many new roads put in there that we don't know that for sure. But the Spalding House Foundation is there, yes, and it is identified. There were no villages, settlements by Native Americans on Merrimack property anywhere that we know of. They came as visitors, particularly during the fishing season. They... Particularly the islands out in the river were twice granted to Chief Passakonaway by the state and then taken back when the settlers wanted to put sheep on them. But there was no settlement here. And there's a lot of studies that have been done. Anheuser-Busch had to do a big study before they built that place. I know when they were doing the dam and all that, all the studies that were done, they have found absolutely no sign of any Native American settlements, and if they didn't settle, they wouldn't have had burials there. So...
Yeah, well, it... What they found in Palom was, I don't know, it was, again, it was a seasonal thing, too, because it was located on Beaver Brook. Uh, so, you know, uh, but anyhow. But those are the kinds of things that we're gonna need, uh, as part of our response for these... For these activities in historical perspective.
Yep. Well, any help we can give, but there's an awful lot that we don't know.
Yeah.
I only know of three burials in Merrimack that are not in cemeteries or graveyards. And there are three of them in Merrimack, but we know who they belong to. They were not Native Americans.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Anita.
Thank you.
As always, thank you for your time and your committee's time.
And to the members as well. Appreciate all you...
Yes, I thank them for being here tonight to support me, and we will go put this right back in the media room.
Especially... Especially when you sit here for an hour and forty-five minutes while we went through the other staff.
Just leave that there. If you're gonna... If you're going to have it moved to the... To the media room, just leave it there. We'll have it done.
Okay.
You don't need to do it.
He's the one that brought it out. It's locked up, and it was locked up. Our photographer in here.
Uh, Justin?
He's busy, so just leave it.
Justin?
Just cover it back up in the plastic, and we'll make sure it's not...
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next. Say what? No, not yet. We have... See, I'm following them.
Is that debatable?
Public hearing, there is none. Legislative update and state reps, I see none. Town manager report, Eileen?
I have none.
Sure, now that I've remembered to ask you, there are none. Consent agenda, none. Old business, none. New business, we've already done the Girl Scout cookie sales. Now, second quarter financial review with Paul McCauley to review key financial information for the second quarter of the 2014-15 school, uh, school year, fiscal year.
Thank you, um, Chair. This is just to inform the council of, um, the how... The state of the finances for the town affected December thirty-first, 2014, six months into our fourteen fiscal year. The key factors we look at are health insurance, retirement, overtime comparisons, and then our revenues. Right now, our health insurance is running about $12,000 less than, uh, the previous year. One of the major factors is because of the... Some of the vacancies that we have had in fire and police. Uh, New Hampshire retirement is running a little bit higher for police department, uh, than... Than previous... In the previous quarter, um, and fire department's a little less. Overall, New Hampshire retirement is running about $35,000 more. One of the factors is, is that, as you'll see with some of the overtime, some of the overtime's a little bit higher, and that equates to higher New Hampshire retirement. Uh, here's the overtime.
Oh.
There is none.
It's underwater.
There is no overtime, yeah. It's shrunk. The, um... Basically, the overtime is running $2,000 less. This is New Hampshire retirement. The overtime slide, for some reason, has gone haywire on me. It's about... Running about $2,000 less than last year at this current time. However, if you look at fire department, they're running right on $219,000. Same this year as last year. Police, however, running about $7,000 more. Highway department is about $20,000 less as of 2014. I don't know what happened to this slide, to be honest with you. It's... It just went crazy on me. It's... It just... That one just went wacky on the... On it. I don't know exactly why. It just is going nuts.
Press on.
But, uh, you know, uh, like I said, the overall overtime is... Is right on. I want to just take a minute right now to talk to you a little bit about highway overtime, because we know about how great our winter has been for the month of February. We could be the coldest month of February in, uh, ever in the state of New Hampshire, and we could almost be pretty damn close to the snowiest month of February. Darn close. To, uh, the snowiest month of February. Sorry about that. The overtime budget is about $20,000 over in highway. Uh, however, there is some savings through, uh, position attrition and things of that sort to help offset that overage in... In the overtime for highway. Our salt shed has about 25% left. I talked to Adam, um, a week ago before the storm on Sunday about, uh, what our sand and salt looks like. He... We just did place an order for sand. We have a PO on the books, ready to go if we need salt. He has a PO ready and to call those people in to bring us salt. Uh, but like I said, we do have about 25% of our salt shed left. We're got basically one more month of snow, if we're lucky, probably, hopefully, half a month in March, and then April is usually the... The spring, the thaw, freeze-thaw-freeze cycles. Uh, we just have to pray for, uh, you know, forty, forty-five degree days, thirty, thirty-five degree nights, so that we don't get the... The heavy rush of melting.
You haven't already been doing that?
Huh?
You haven't already been praying for that kind of weather?
I've been... I've been watching WMUR, a lot of State Holiday and Express last night. Um, but, uh, no, so those... Those are the things that... That, uh, we look at. We're gonna keep our close eye on the overtime. We had a storm on Sunday, uh, of this week, uh, which is not included in these overtime numbers. Hopefully, next week, they're... They're predicting two storms on Monday and Wednesday. Hopefully, they're not gangbuster storms. And then the last slide we look at is the revenues, and as we look at the revenues for the town, um, our auto registrations are running about $100,000 more than last year, which is a good sign going through, uh, half a year. So we're ahead of our projections on auto registrations. The building permits are down slightly from, uh, 2013, '14, about $28,000. However, if you look at prior years, 2011, '12, and '12, '13, we're about $4,000 more than what they were, so we should be right in our projected about $100,000 for building permits this year. And then, of course, interest is, uh, seeing better days. And hopefully, uh... But it's made an uptick a little bit from last year, we're about $3,000 more than last year. However, at $24,000 for, uh... For a halfway point, we'll be about, you know, in the $48,000 range, so we keep an eye on that, and we keep an eye on looking at, uh, new and, uh, new ways to invest the money and money markets, things of that sort, trying to get the best, uh, best return for our investment. I do have to tell you that, uh, you might be reading about it, um, New Hampshire Public Depository Pool, um, on Monday will be meeting. It appears that the company that they have, uh, to... To have their money markets and their assets for the state of New Hampshire, it was developed by the state to keep, uh, the government banking industry honest. Their back... Backer Cutwater has given their notice that they will not be renewing their contract, so they'll be going out to bid. I'm sure you'll be reading stuff in the Union Leader and the Concord Poet Monitor and things of that sort about it. Right now, I do, uh... Well, we do not have a lot of money in the town of Merrimack in the New Hampshire Public Deposit Pool. We have less than $50,000 in there, which after Monday, when I go to the meeting with the Banking Commission, uh, to see where... Where they're gonna go, we might have less than that in... In there and request our money to be withdrawn from the... The pool, so to speak. But I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. That's, uh, something that's coming down the road, um, that I found out about just yesterday, that there's a meeting on Monday, so we'll know more about it. We have sufficient appropriations. We're in great financial shape. We received our audit. Put everybody... Put an audit everybody's been. It is, uh... It is not on the town website yet. It will be on the town website, but we do have it. We have it electronically, and we do have some copies if anybody from the public would like to look at it. Uh, fund balance is about $3.2 million. Unreserved fund balance is about $3.2 million, which is up from last year. Uh, it's healthy. We're right at the bottom end of that four to eight percent. We're right around the four percent mark. So we have significantly increased over the last couple of years, that percentage up to the four percent mark and continue to be strong. Uh, revenues, like I said, we keep a close eye on them. Auto registration's a big one. Right now, it looks like we're trending a little bit higher than what we're projecting. And the last thing for the council is that, uh, that snowstorm that happened, uh, they call it the Nemo Snowstorm that happened in January, that big, quick blizzard that we have. I sent in all the paperwork for federal funding. We had enough as a state to qualify. They're just seeing the backup data from other communities and other towns around us, so we'll be hearing about that hopefully shortly in the spring. And that will help offset some of that overtime that we spent in highway.
I just want to say thanks, uh, for the whole highway team. To say that after this winter, we're only looking at $20,000, that's... That's amazing. I mean, to hear some of the other numbers from other cities and towns. Um, I can't say enough about the team there. That's just... That's awesome, to think that that's all we're... We're behind right now. Just thanks. That's just a great job. And furthermore, um, I would have held it for the comments at the time, but I just want to say I'm so proud of, uh, the work that they do in plowing our roads. The streets here are just so good. If you travel outside of Merrimack and go to some other places, it's horrible, and it just makes me appreciate, uh, the good job that they do here, plowing, um, in the work. So thanks.
And they are tired.
Oh, yeah, I'll bet.
They are... They are tired. You know, they were happy that they had a week.
Exactly.
You know, even puts on the aside, they had a week. So, you know.
Thank you very much, Chair. Any questions for Paul?
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Okay, next on the agenda is minutes of February 12, 2015.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, February 12, 2015 Town Council meeting minutes with the following corrections. On page six, line 11, line 34, line 42, it's initialized SC... You know, SCBA, PWD for Public Works Division, GIS, which is Geographic Information Systems. It was wonderful if we could just write that out, so that people will understand what they are.
Yeah, well, the common practice is the first time you use the term, you write it out and then use the acronym.
Correct. Moving forward to page 10, line 12, I'd like to ask Counselor Dwyer to refresh his recollection. It reads, "Going back to the nature in the positions there, he feels as though they are good jobs and the employees are well compensated." I didn't quite understand what was meant by "going back to the nature."
Nature of the jobs. You checking it books?
Okay, so it should read, "Going back to the nature of the positions there." Instead of "and," use the word "of," and that would clarify Counselor Dwyer's comments.
I like it as it's presented.
Yeah, but we can go back to the video.
Go right ahead.
Yeah.
Page 11, line 1. This is where I will be. Page 11, line 1. Notice how I'm ignoring Counselor Dwyer. Thank you. It reads, "The contract mirrors what every other union has agreed to," semicolon. Should it be a colon?
This is Council Root Canal.
I'll second the motion of those corrections.
I have nothing further.
Okay, the motion made by Bill Boyd with the changes...
Counsel Koenig has a...
And Lon Woods. Okay.
I was noticing on the bottom of page four, at lines 46 and 47, it says we went into recess at 7:18. We have four pages of minutes, and that's eighteen minutes into the meeting. I somehow have a hard time believing that. I think the discussion about Kinder Morgan things and whatnot took a lot longer to go through than eighteen.
That's a good catch. I'd agree with that.
So I think that was probably 8:18, but...
I would agree with that.
Could we verify that with the video? Thank you.
I'm sure you could. It'd be good if you didn't move a second time, too. That's why I said both lines, 46 and 47.
Okay, so that will be added to the revisions. We'll double-check. Okay, by Bill Boyd, seconded by Lon Woods. All those in favor of the change... The approval with the changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any negative against? Seven, zero, zero. No, you said no.
Sure. I said yes. It's a change.
Oh, yeah, but "and" didn't change. He didn't want to change. Okay, comments from the press. Comments from the public. Comments from the council. Oh, you want to make... Hold on. Mr. Woods has something to say. Get ready, though.
I just... I would like to reinforce for the, uh, TV audience out there, if they opt to, uh, communicate with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission on the, um, form that we suggested, and I'm sure it's on the website, to look very carefully at the bottom where it begins. One, the Commission encourages electronic filing of comments. I just wanted to reinforce that, because in my conversations at both open houses with FERC, um, representatives, one, Elaine Baum, who works directly with the Office of Energy Projects, and Eric...
Tamasi.
Who is our... This project's manager at this point, emphasized that electronic filing is really the way to go to get FERC's most whatever attention, most undivided attention, and the, um... The procedure for that is outlined at the bottom of the form. And they need... I... I would just encourage people to look at that and follow that closely. And they need, I, I just encourage people to look at that and, and follow that closely.
The link is on our webpage.
Thank you.
The, the, the link for electronic comments, but there's a couple, you got to go through a couple of steps to do it, though. Okay, you got to register and do a couple of other things before you can make a, a formal comment. But the link is already on our, our webpage.
I'd just like to reinforce that the, the form shouldn't be filled up with, "I hate the pipeline" kind of stuff. You can write that kind of thing, but please write another one that just asks for the scoping meeting so that they can separate them out into different piles. Because if they have to read through all of the words and expletives and that kind of thing and then find the scoping meeting at the bottom, they probably won't. So if we could just focus on, on that for, for these, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so motion.
Actually, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just, I wanted to just tell off Dan's comments prior to our comments. Public Works has been amazing and they, they are, they're, no, they're very dedicated.
Speak in the microphone.
My brother-in-law used to work in Nashville as a police officer, and he said that they couldn't get guys to go in. They'd have to pay him to carry a pager. And even with the pager, they would still possibly ignore it until their work day began. So our guys, once they start, I don't think they quit till it's over. Most of them are there for many more than a good amount of hours. It's, so I do appreciate the efforts as well. Thank you.
Just real briefly, I wanted to request that we consider moving the Kinder Morgan discussion after the announcements. And that way, we would be able to consolidate all comments from press and public in the one comment period. And the announcements are relatively short, and it allows us to have a, a sort of an official opening to our meeting. This morning, this evening, we did the Pledge of Allegiance, and then suddenly, we're talking about Kinder Morgan for the next hour and something before we even went to announcements. I, I would feel better if we moved it there, but certainly, the chairman had requested.
To after announcements?
To after announcements.
I don't have a problem with that. Does the council?
You control the agenda.
Yeah, I'm okay with that as well. So with permission of the council? I'd be happy to do that. So we're going to move the Kinder Morgan future agenda items till after announcements. Sounds fine. Thank you. Okay, now, we have, we're back. Motion is on the floor. Do I need a second?
Second.
Tom May, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any absences and extensions? Nothing? Okay, seven, zero, zero. Everybody was here for that meeting. Thank you.